Good morning, everyone, and welcome today to the this beautiful day of Tuesday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, and we are having the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting. First of all, I would like to congratulate Mr. Don Tranker on the Mary. So you've got an.
You got it. And we. It was an eventful week.
And thank you for that. With us today, we have Don Tranker, Nan Prego, Mike Stein, it's your county two supervisors. Lisa Smith, our auditor, Jackson County Auditor, Beauregard, this from IP Department, Lou Ann is our executive assistant in the background. Mary Hayward is from the newspaper.
We're going to send them press.
We're going to send the press. Owned by Sycamore Media.
She's going into a whole.
Tell about the details.
And first on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Kenny, Jackson County Attorney. Good morning.
Good morning.
So really, one thing scheduled on the agenda is. They set the hearing for the three hundred and eighth street. Second I grew, secondary road assessment district. So I sent the. Mission report with the error in the. Apportment, so I apologize for that. So the basically what happened was on page four, I think I sent out the revise sheet to you guys. Hopefully you put that in your reports, but.
Had to come call them about that.
Yes, I got an email on the way to. But. So the the apportionment wasn't split fifty-fifty. Before we apportioned it, so basically you cut the cost in half and then apportion it. So basically cut there. The apportionment to the property owners in half, basically is what happened. So went from fourteen thousand and two dollars to seven thousand and one dollars. So which to the petitioners probably is a pretty big difference.
And we kind of like the terms of.
That would have been a hundred percent. So Todd, I guess with with we set a public hearing, does that mean they have agreed to these terms? Or we have agreed to these terms or?
So I emailed. County attorney about it. And. So we set a public hearing and. Basically, that that offers the. Opportunity for people. That have an interest in this district, which would be potentially whoever, but most likely the people that are. Going to be assessed the apportionment. They can provide their comments about it, well, how they feel, you know, good, bad, or different sort of. So you take that input and then you can table those hearings, but at some point you have to make a file. You have a final hearing. You have to make a decision. You can either amend the petition and change the apportionments. Or you can deny petition, or you can approve it as is. But. After the hearing. If you, you know, you you could have multiple hearings to solicit comment from the public. But once all that comment period is over and you have the final hearing, at some point you need to take action on the petition, the assessment. Report and petition, basically.
Okay, so if we change the parameter, the agreement now, and that goes into the public hearing. It could be say, yes, 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 whatever, or you could still change it.
Now, so. I forwarded an email from John, right? You did. Yeah, so that if you read his email, it's pretty explicit that you have the board has the ability to change the apportionment. At the time of the hearing.
But we have to have the hearing for what they offered. And then during that, we can change it.
Yeah, so they still have a so how that works is you can change the apportionment. You don't need to deny the hearing because we talked about this last time. Do you need to deny this petition and then have repetition for a different assessment? No, you could just say. We can do forty percent. You can do, you know, sixty, forty, but the minimum. Petitioners have to pay a minimum of half the cost. You can apportion more than half, but they have to pay a minimum by code.
So in the public hearing, we change it. Let's just say we change it to they still have to agree to.
No. Let me get the email. I printed it out, but I didn't bring it here.
So if they don't agree to it, we just don't do it?
Well, that's one of the options.
I'd email. I was a little confused on that.
Well, I was too. The way I mean, legal terms are read anyway.
They're written. I wouldn't break it. Yeah. So this is the email and the response from John, but. So I asked the question, if the board decides they want to change the apportionment to say, for instance, a seventy-five. Twenty-five. Split, I assume the petitioners have the right to withdraw their petition. And the secondary road assessment district doesn't get established. He says, no, they do not. Not once the board establishes the district. Now, understand there's not a case law, a lot of case law in this, but but a plain reading of three eleven point one six and three eleven point two four. Indicates the only remedy remedy is to appeal to the district court. So. But what he's saying is, once you establish it, that means you've taken action and approved it. So that to me is a little bit of a gray area, but. But it does say the board may change the amount and gives them the power and warns the public that the board may increase or decrease the amount apportioned to each tract of land without further notice.
And they have to agree to it then?
So as long as the hearing notice had the language required in three eleven fifteen, which is. The hearing has to state. The time and place of the hearing, the roads are proposed to be improved, the type of servicing proposed, the estimated cost. The description of the lands, the ownership of the lands, and the apportionment. So if the hearing notice we give out says fifty-fifty apportionment. That's what you have the hearing on. Now, if you want to change that, then you're going to have to have repost to have another hearing that has a notice of whatever apportionment you want to change it to. That's the way I read that.
Okay, okay, so we can't change it now and put it in there for this public hearing. If we if we so desire.
Right, so you what what happened is you're going to have a hearing on this report as the fifty-fifty. Now, if you want to have another hearing, after you have discussion or whatever, you want to have a hearing and say you want to change the apportionment, we have to post. The way I read this, and I can confirm this with John, is we have to schedule, you can repost. Repost, have another hearing and and whether you're going to change the apportionment.
You you got the terms of the new apportionment in another hearing. We can't change that now for this public hearing.
No, we have to.
We have to address the one strictly the way it is. We can't change any terms or apportionment.
I would say you. You probably could because we haven't posted the hearing information yet.
Right, right.
But you probably could do that, but I think initially you would make sense to have the hearing based on this report. And then if you want to have another hearing and change the apportionment, then we do that. We post that information according to three eleven. And then you have another hearing with a different information.
That's what we have. Basically, we have our discussion, our decision, whatever, whatever.
First, during that hearing, we say we want to do a seventy-five twenty-five, just throwing out numbers. And all of them are like, uh-uh, we don't want to do that, then it would just kind of die. At that point, correct?
Well, then I think if 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 that through the discussion, it's it's revealed that the the both of the property owners. Are not interested in a change of the split other than fifty-fifty, then you could close the hearing and then take action and and deny and and deny it. Now, i- through the discussion, you you feel like there's there's room for negotiation and you and you feel like you've reached some kind of common ground, then you could, what do you call that, adjourn the hearing? No, actually, you'd have to close the hearing and you'd have to set a new hearing because you'd have more different information to post. You post a new information for the hearing. And then you have another hearing on the different apportionment and then then take action after that.
Because we never seriously discussed this publicly, what we thought, you know, about.
Well, that's why you have this. That's the reason.
That is, that's when we would discuss all that. Okay, so basically all we're doing is set the date.
That's all. We're not discussing the petition. We're deciding a date to do that.
And getting back to the financing of this, regardless of the apportionment that is set. We are going to end up basically paying the whole bill that over the course of ten years get paid back. Reimbursed.
With interest.
With interest.
Yeah.
Do we have the room to stomach a three hundred thousand dollar bill? Because if I understand, there's no bond being issued. We're not borrowing the money. So where do we come up with the you said the PCC, that's what, two ninety-four? Where do we go up with the two ninety-four that we have to kind of carry an internal loan? As we wait for the ten years to pay them back?
So reading the section and the the payment of construction costs, okay. So the total cost of any secondary road assessment district project shall be in the first instance be paid out of the county treasury. Any assessments which are paid in cash and any anticipation of which assessments where no certificates have been issued shall be transferred to county treasurer. So.
So this, so then basically the bank would be the county treasury. And they would give you guys the money. We would pay the bill. Do they have three hundred thousand sitting in account that isn't obligated in some manner or fashion that we can sit on for ten years while these people pay the ten year? That that's my question.
Yeah, that would be a.
Somewhere the somewhere there needs to be three hundred thousand dollars in an account that we can pull this out of, or it becomes a moot point.
Yeah, I would say. There's two options. You can do it that way, or you can have it be paid out of the secondary road fund. And then the secondary road fund gets reimbursed over the ten years. So there's two options. So you can sell these certificates, road certificates. And I would, I mean, I'm, you'd have to ask that question to the treasurer. I'm going to guess your general fund has enough. What do you call it? Available balance carryover to 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 absorb three hundred thousand dollars. I'm going to say because you're required to have, you probably have several million, I'm guessing.
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Close to it.
So I to answer that question, I would say. I would assume so, but that'd be a question for the treasurer. I don't think that.
That is why I only hesitate through this whole thing is. Regardless.
I hear what you're saying, but again, the.
Somebody needs that that contractor is not going to sit on this for ten years. Somebody needs to pony up to three hundred grand if we do the or two thirty or whatever, which one we decide. That needs to come from somewhere, and that's my concern is where is that? Who is that person that can hold this while we get reimbursed?
What's it being taken away from?
Right, and what is.
Affecting for the next ten years.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, they pay, let's start right away, and I think if I could, if I remember like you said, right, you'd have to want to let it set for a year, rebuild, whatever construct, so it would be. Up to code FEMA or whatever it might be and let it set for a year. So we're still already into the next fiscal, probably.
Well, if we do the PCC option, I think you're referring to we we build a road base up with aggregate, double do the double chip seal and probably let it sit for a year.
Okay, so that wasn't, you don't have to rebuild, you don't think for.
With PCC, you could, you would just pay it on grade. You'd do the grade trimming and you pay on grade. That's the. I say the nice thing about it is you you don't have to do a bunch of work upfront. The other thing is we're not raising the road profile fifteen inches and creating steeper forest slope swirling, raising it seven inches. And keep it more of a flatter forest slope.
So again, with that being said, I mean, the participants would have the option to pay to pay their portion, right?
Up front.
Yeah.
If the code allows it, if the apportionment is over five hundred dollars, it gives them the option to request to pay it over ten equal installments. Each annually, each year.
Some of them might pay in advance, some might pay over ten years. I mean.
Well, it's actually, I guess it would be nine years because you pay on the the first assessment and then you pay one for the next nine years. It's ten equal payments.
That is one thing. That's my only question for this is. Who has the three hundred grand that? Pays the the contractor bill. While this comes in however.
Yes, but if if you can sell these road assessment certificates, then that would be something that the treasurer would. You you I don't know. They, I'm not that familiar, but you sell, people can buy these certificates. They they have interest that you get paid back on. That is set by. A section of the code up to the max. I think it's like. One seventy-four A in the code. But it's, I mean, it's all that what's required is in the in the the secondary road assessment is chapter three eleven. So if we talk about.
Again, I mean, there's still a lot of discussion to be had. I'd sure like to do all the roads, and if somebody's going to pay for half of them, you know, but. You know, I mean, there's a discussion ahead. Do we set a precedence or what our percentage is, you know, going forward, and if somebody wants to do five miles, that's a different number, you know? So other than a quarter of a mile, but if somebody's going to want to do five miles, four miles, and you got thirty participants. You know, what is our percentage? I'd like to see him. I'd like to see improvement, but where are we at with it? I mean, there's this discussion to be had.
Yeah, so that's. Something that you as the board will have to decide. What is your? threshold for. Petitioners' participation in a secondary road assessment district.
Maybe next, maybe next week after the meeting, we set a work session that we can talk about it, and then we can get Beth involved and figure out some financing.
From what I'm hearing, this all gets talked about in the public hearing.
Well. You guys. How do I say that? Lisa can help me on it, but if you're going to decide on policy, you need to do that in an open meeting.
Right.
I think, I mean, you could do. But I see what you're saying. You're going to review each each petition and proposed establishment of a district individually when they come forward. But you kind of want to treat everybody the same. I think it just comes down to you got to decide what that split is. That's what it comes down.
Anything that vote on needs to be decided in a public open meeting.
Right, we understand.
But we still need to have work sessions so we can talk about, A, do we have that much money sitting there that we can utilize? B, what cup split are we comfortable with and figure out where we're sitting before we actually did decide to present. So to me, that's, yeah, I I think that's a discussion like next week, we have a work session, so we can more discuss it. Because we haven't really.
Yeah, so and you can do that. But right now, we just need to set the date for the.
Right.
Right, I'm cool with that too. I mean, because.
So the so the location for the hearing date is four and twenty, so not less than four nor more than twenty. So we just need to pick a date when you want to have the hearing. If you want to have a work session, then I would. I would suggest that we. Look, what we got here.
For June, today is the twenty-third.
You're going to have your work session on the thirtieth?
Yeah. Like the sixth?
The hearing, the sixth wouldn't be too, it's too quick. We couldn't get a notice out. Well, I guess I shouldn't say that I could get that out.
Thirteen, 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 or twentieth. You're around the thirteenth.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, here's the thing, you know, I mean, that that's the other thing. So I've been public hearing, I could always. But if people have vacation skills, they're ready for the summer and and whatnot. Yeah, I would sooner sooner do it sooner than later.
Right.
I mean, why should we wait? And we should have a discussion and be done with it.
If we do it on the thirteenth, we got to have it ready for the papers by the second. If we do it on the sixth, we got to have it ready by this Friday. Go to the papers. And it doesn't leave much time for a work session.
I'm good with either.
So you're thinking June thirteenth?
Then we give two weeks. It'd be three weeks.
It's a four and twenty.
It's three weeks from today.
Yeah. Would be that's.
So you can still put it, you still could publish it by the end of this week. And still have it on the sixth. If you so desire.
They don't publish until next Wednesday.
Yes, but you got to have it in by this Friday.
Friday morning, right, so we can done the next week's.
Which is fine, too. It's up to you, Todd.
Tell me.
Are you available? I mean, are you? I thought you were checking.
Thirteenth and the twentieth, either either one of those days is fine.
Are you available the sixth?
The sixth is. Our safety meeting day for both, so that would be.
The thirteenth.
Thirteen.
I made a motion that we set the public hearing date for the three hundred and eighth street secondary road assessment for June thirteenth.
Would be like. Nine o'clock, ten o'clock, nine thirty.
I would suppose we better do it at something like tenish. It could be lengthy.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
I'm motion to second to approve the public hearing for three-way secondary road assessment district for. June thirteenth, ten AM. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, who was named? Motion care.
Okay, so in just as a follow up to that, you're talking June sixth. Thanks to have this on the agenda as a work session. How do you guys do that? What do you do?
I mean, I thought the thirtieth.
The thirtieth, yeah. June thirtieth, we'll have a work session.
May thirtieth.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Or how do you?
Tell me how that looks. How much stuff do you have on the schedule?
The thirtieth?
Yeah, okay. We'll do like a work session at ten thirty or something like that.
Okay, is that something you can invite the treasurer to? Because that's.
Yeah.
Some of your questions are going to have to be answered by.
That's all part of just figuring out how this process would all work.
So with that being said, could you fill our treasurer in a little bit? I don't know how much discussion she heard about this and or she needs to talk to the county attorney. Because this is new to all of us, this second.
Me too. We had one that was petitioning, Clint County was denied. But we've never had one that went through, so.
Want to make sure we're stepping appropriately.
I mean, yeah, we've had more discussion from other groups, you know, so I think we need to address it. So let's let's just address it and be done with it.
Okay. Let me make a note. I need that. That notice here. And that's something we do, right? Not you, Lisa.
I do not, as far as the notice.
The publication of the hearing notice.
Um, the one usually gets it in the paper, he give her all the information.
And when do you need advice for publication?
Friday morning.
Right.
No, no, I got it back in off a week.
The thirteenth is the hearing date.
Oh, so.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Just a quick update on some project work. So Y sixty-one, the HMA paving job, the amount to the value cascade road, they're going to start doing placing the HMA interlayer. Tuesday of next week, so that the project could be ongoing for several weeks now. The we got motor grader training coming up next Wednesday and Thursday, Wednesday, and I got Clinton County guys coming too, so. The class, it should be full, pretty full. Wednesday is the classroom training part of the cocoa shop. And then Thursday is where they actually take machines out, and it's what I would call the field day where they're actually working with them in the field.
And may I ask who teaches that?
Local transfer, local technical assistance program, it's called LTAP. They're out of Ames. It's a state and a federally funded program that provides training for locals. So what they do is they hire like. Either retired or like. Very experienced grader operators. They will come and 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 there's also a trainer that LTAP has, but they bring in guys, what I would call experts in the field to come in and and train the guys on. You know, techniques and different things and that kind of stuff.
The only reason I ask that is because like wherever the trainers may come from, if it's Ames or West or something, their terrain is a little different than Jackson County. So, you know, I mean, it's it's a process where you're.
Outside again.
Well, yeah.
It's up and down and around.
We need to make sure we get it in the minutes.
And then real quick on the. The road retrieval work. Area eight is done. Area six should be done by the end of this week. And area five. Iron Hill, they got five miles done. And then as soon as they get done in area six, they'll be going there. So basically, by the end of the week, we'll have roughly twenty-five miles done. You know, and we started what April?
In May.
Twenty-seventh, so that's not too bad.
Yeah, sounds good. I've heard good things.
It's pretty dry out there.
Yeah.
So it's pretty hard to combat compact stuff. So I was talking to Skinny this morning, like if you got roads that you don't have a lot of material material to, like, a grand hand. If you don't have, if you got roads that don't have a lot of material to bring in, do those because. It's not going to compact well without moisture and save the roads where you got big lips till we get a little moisture that's easier to pack, so anyway.
Um. Maybe you can answer this for me or not, but I see the work, some of the work done on sixty-two, so that's a state, of course, but is it the same process that we're going through? I happened to forget about it one day, so I got stuck in the stop sign and I drove through, but going through there, it appears like they're taking four to six inches out of it. But by the time the machine gets through there, it's all back in there almost.
Oh, so I I'd have to, I don't, I have to drive, but it sounds like what you're describing is cold in place recycling. Yeah, so they're milling it up. They add a rejuvenating agent. They plug mill it in a mill and then they lay it back down and compact it, and it looks like asphalt, but it's really a little bit coarser mixed, and then they'll put hot mix on top of it. That's the cold in place recycling process.
I was kind of.
I'm going, well, they're not loading any trucks here with this material, but it's all gone. It's this deep. It was gone, but by the time I got to. Went to the end of the machine, it was all back in almost the same.
Usually a continuous train. There's a mill or pre-mill. It goes in conveyor into a plug mill, another piece of equipment, then it lays it back out in a red windrow, and then you actually have a paving machine that picks it back up and lays it out, and then they roll it, compact it just like asphalt.
I I just, I've never seen an operation like that, but I thought it was pretty.
Cold place recycling, you do it all the time?
I I again, I'm a little behind times, but I haven't seen it done. That's that's not, that's not like the same process we will do on two fiftieth then, right?
Also, cold in place recycling, you typically would do it on asphalt road that's got at least four inches of asphalt over PCC. The inner layer, what we're doing, the inner layer is like, how do I describe that? It's a highly polymerized mixed. It's dense but flexible, so they, it's like a, it's a crack mitigator. So you lay that down over the concrete. So you don't get reflected cracks, and then then you put your regular. Surface and base course on top of that. So it's acts as like a a big crack mitigating layer.
So we did that on the Red Schoolhouse Road, if that's what you want to call it, the airport road. I was not impressed with the amount of cracks that were coming through two years later, you know, so.
So your process is a little, I in Clint County, we did. An inner layer job. I was. How do I say this? Not impressed with the results. We actually had somebody from Asphalt Paving Association come out from the state, and we took some cores over where cracks showed up. And long story short, what we found out is if you got an old PCC pavement. Like six inch pavement, plain jointed, which eighty percent of the roads, county paved roads back in the sixties and seventies were that. If you get the panel joints, the transverse joints, perpendicular, someone, if those get much wider than like a half inch to three quarters. This stuff doesn't bridge those, even though it's supposed to be, you know, stress mitigator, crack mitigator, you'll get a crack there. That's what was happening, all these cracks. And we even cracked and seeded it, meaning we came in and broke the panels to give even more stress relief. And we still end up with transverse cracks. Now, they say they have better polymers in the the what they call the massacre, the elastic recovery, elastic recovery. So basically, how much? Crack stress that will absorb is supposedly higher is a better binder, and it's supposed to reduce the cracking, but. That's story. The jury's still out, but.
Was that the salesman saying this?
Well, it is a higher spec, meaning it used to be, I think, about eighty-five percent was the minimum. Now they spec, I think, ninety-two percent. I don't quote me on that, but it's a higher percentage, but.
Okay, well, I mean, that. Take up all your time, but I appreciate the answers and. Yeah, they're good things, so.
All right, we'll see. Thanks.
Yep, thanks, Todd. Are there any visitors or citizens that are not on our agenda that I would like to address to go with? If not, we will go to Matt Speck from ECIA. Discussion on an RLF loan request.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
And Leo?
It's morning.
Hello, this is Will.
Yes.
All righty. So the Jackson County Fair Association. Put in a request to the loan committee for. Eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two campground improvements. They want to do improvements. My understanding is kind of up on the north. Campground, sounds like grading, electrical, to get that all. A little more camper friendly, I guess. It sounds like between the fair. And then Blue Nines, dog shows that they have out there, the the campgrounds. Are overflowing, I guess. She sounds like there's a good, pretty good waiting list on it, so it sounds like it'd be a great project for the community in the area. The board did recommend approval of it. They had a four percent interest rate for seven years. I was wondering if supervisors have questions, comments?
Um, I guess, Matt. I have not heard of any of this, other than I know there were some issues going on, and we suggested, maybe they talked to the real loan, so. I I apologize, but we really never had much chance to have any discussion of what we may do, or if we as county, it is our property. Or if we as county, um, it is our property, so if we was going to contribute. Maybe to, um, this project. Uh, and we didn't have the chance to discuss it, I, as I, as I, I know it's. It's critical that, you know, for fair purposes and camping purposes, they get this project underway. But, um. I, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I really haven't. I mean, I, I. Even being, you know, the terms as they are. I would, I would think as being a. County property that we might even be a little more lenient with the terms, but if I would say it's something like fact, but, uh. And I guess that we, we had talked, I mean, just briefly with. Thanks for, it was in here requested at one time, yeah, but. Yeah, so we just, we talked about, um, maybe contributing to the project, so. Tell me how that works, if we can, um. Either come back with another proposal if we have a chance to discuss it, or do we? Amend these terms or, uh, how, how does that?
In the past, is, is what's happened is. The, the R L F board makes a recommendation to the supervisors and then you guys ultimately have. The decision to amend it, so if you would want to amend the dollar amount of terms, the board does have that. Authority to do that, and they've done that in the past, so.
Okay, so is that done now? Is that discussion happen now, or do you come back if we have a chance to discuss it, or? We discuss it now, make a decision and, and you can move forward with this agreement as amended.
In the past, it happened now, but I mean, I guess, again, besides. For long, you know, cause like I said, they do wanna get going, you could, you could push it back and discuss. After the fact, but like I said, anytime, anytime a change has been made, it's usually been now, and then we were able to keep proceeding, so.
So I guess with that being said, as far as the terms that are listed here, we had, we have a little bit of time to review, um. Does the other, the rear leader of the board here have any recommendations or comments?
Well, I think we should support the project, it is technically our property managed by the fairgrounds, the fair board and stuff, so. I know we have a little remaining funds we have left over from the sale of the welcome center. So I guess that would be, maybe using some of that to kind of help with the loan to kind of find a. Pay down the load a little bit, and I guess just so I understand it correctly, the revolving loan fund is just an E C I A lot of money, or is this our money?
It's, it's a county money.
Okay.
We just administer for the county.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, Don, I, I guess maybe if you wanna give a brief explanation, but it is county pot, it started years ago, I wanna say. I, I'd guess, Lisa, you know better than me, thirty. Somewhere in that area. I would say default or very minimal, is that correct?
I think one over that time.
Yeah, and normally, uh, interest is less than. Going rate, standard rate or whatever, current rate, whatever it may be. Um, depending on the project also, whether, like you say, whether it's a county project or county owned, um, we've done before. Uh, I know with recent, recently here, our interest rates are climbing and. To adjust our inflation, if that's where you, how you wanna do it, but that's, um, so. I, I would somewhat agree with Don that I think we should participate in the.
I agree with that, I also like, maybe we should get a better interest rate just. Paying money back to ourselves, so we're. I mean, that's.
Oh, I guess, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, whoever set up this revolving loan, um. Initiative is, I mean, it's very good for the community, but it was initiated to. I think kind of for businesses to create jobs, if it will. Prolong it, uh, you know, something to pack, again, this is a good project because we just don't have the money and they're willing to take out the loan, and then. I guess if they default. To me, it sounds like it still comes back to the county. So, I mean, I know they've done well last couple of years, but who knows?
This is. So I can kind of get the timeframe with everything, um. The current ask is in. Our bills today. If we say hypothetically, we decide we would like to contribute twenty thousand dollars. Because we have heard through the, you know, through the fair that they're starting, they're proceeding with that there's some safety concerns. That their, their need this work done before the fair, they're getting some bills. If we decided to contribute like twenty thousand dollars, could we just? Send that to the fair board to handle some of the initial bills, because they have deposits and stuff. As a contribution and then amend the loan agreement down twenty thousand? Because I think whatever's in that's gonna have to be pulled out. And has to come back in the next bills or have a separate word written. And that would be at least a week or two weeks, cause these only come every two weeks, so that would push the approval check back two weeks. I don't know how time sensitive it is. For the fair board?
Yeah, I don't, I know, like I said, when we met with her last week, they wanted to start. You know, she said, cause we asked when they want to start, they said yesterday, so.
So the fastest way to get it would be approved it as written, then with our. Let's say hypothetically twenty grand would just be like the first loan payment to pay down the amount?
We would pay them directly, we'd enter into an agreement to make sure that the money, that whatever you choose to. Contribute towards the project, that we would enter into an agreement with them. Um, to make sure that it went for the project instead of for.
Wages or whatever, yeah, so we would enter into agreement and that would pass already.
So that would have to be written and brought to a meeting and approved, and so. Either way, it's gonna be a couple of weeks.
I would definitely take it out of today's claim.
We, yeah, we'll take that out.
Take the whole eighty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollar claim out of. Today's, um, claims and then I would amend and correct the transfer agreement with whatever terms. And money you decided on.
Right.
And.
Take it out if we, if that's what we decide.
Yeah, again, I, that's just, yes, if you decide not to do this entire eighty-one thousand seven ninety-two, then yes.
Okay, so I guess that is our discussion right here.
Technically. Could we approve today's as is and they get a check today, so they could start today? And then give them a donation for twenty thousand that could be used to pay down.
Something gets messy here.
This is, this is.
And I think.
And maybe the loan officer would tell it.
And I may, I may be miss, miss.
I'm not an expert in, in county government, but, um, yeah, I don't, whatever works for you, I mean, certainly.
Also, or do we prove this? And then we send you the twenty grand as a first payment and then the balance is sixty-one grand.
I don't think.
Well, and we can, we can get the paperwork going from, from our side, and I think we've had to do it before. You know, we need to get the money out.
To change the term, basically what you're doing is changing it.
Correct, and we'll change the terms, get the loan docs, we will have a little bit of time to get the loan docs prepared. But I think in the past, sometimes we, we, you know, because we do this with Dubuque County too. Sometimes we fund it internally until we get the check from the company. So we can still.
Okay, well, that's, that's more of a, that sounds like more of a, 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 a solution to me than. I guess right now, we need to come up if we're all in agreement on, on terms. I mean, you mentioned maybe contributing.
Throw out twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, you mentioned, uh, maybe two percent interest, if, if that's the only two. Terms we're considering. I guess if.
What do you think?
I, I mean, I like both numbers, I, I think it's, I think it's, uh, certainly. Responsibility of ours to maintain the, maintain the property and. It is, it is our property and, and then in the end, it's gonna belong to us one way or the other, anyway, so.
Right.
What they're, the improvements are, it's no different than the building that's going up, I mean, it's a. Three million dollar project, that's gonna be our building when we're done, so. Uh, I think we're responsible to contribute to.
So. If I understand it right, if we say, okay, we'd like to contribute twenty thousand dollars, we need to come up with a business. Agreement with them. So that knocks this number down at sixty-one thousand, at, let's say, two percent, like then. If we said that, you guys could start that paperwork and get it going and then fund it and get them going.
And then all you come back with different terms on a different.
Well, we would come with a new transfer agreement for.
And that way they can, they can make their, their loan payments based on, seven year loan payment based on sixty-one thousand instead of.
Correct, so. Do we need to address the claims first or just address it? Address the claims when we get to the two.
I'm gonna actually, as soon as, however you vote right now, I will let Shelly know to take the eighty-one thousand seven ninety-two.
So the claims will change by that, right?
Okay, so when we approve the claims later, we will subtract that from the.
It'll be off of the claims and we will agree to the new amount.
Yes.
What about the ten, nine thousand eight, eighty-eight dollars? They know about that?
Yeah, they don't, yeah.
Okay, and they were good there. Yeah, that was the first I had heard of that one.
Pretty sure when Roseanne was working through it with Terry.
Well, and she, it may have been, I just, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to.
So the terms are all agreeable to the board, uh, I, I would. Do we need to reject this proposal and, or do we need to just change the terms of this proposal and motion and move forward?
I would change the terms in the motion and, in the proposal, and a motion too with, with a motion and to move forward that way.
So the terms would be, um, sixty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars, seven year loan at two percent interest with a twenty thousand dollar. Contribution from the county? Would that be the motion needed?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
This is minor details, but they, you're getting more than ten percent into it, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
It's fine, okay, cause.
We'll take that motion.
I will second that.
Motion second to, um, change the specifications of the loan to be approved. To the fairgrounds as presented from the rule loan fund, all those in favor say aye. I oppose nay.
And just to be written that twenty thousand dollars is actually coming from the leftover funds from the sale of the welcome center, so that's not tax revenue or anything. That's some additional, uh, money that we have.
Capital improvement, if you will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So the transfer agreement, uh, we don't have to have, do any action on that, Matt, as far as.
Well, do you want me to send a modified one, Lisa down, with the right?
What I would do is, I mean, send it down for next week.
Okay.
And they would approve it next week by motion.
Okay.
So if you're okay with that, it, I mean, it's, it's a week, okay, and then this, this check. So we're not sending a check this week, we're gonna take everything out, so it'll be two weeks before you get a check, okay?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I mean, whatever these minimal changes that we're doing here. I mean, unless you wanna go for a ride, you can come down, otherwise.
Not next week, sorry. All right, thanks, guys, thanks, gentlemen.
Now, just one quick thing, Matt.
Yeah.
Do we need to formally appoint Leo as the kind of the chairman or the, has that been done yet?
Hey, wait, do we go through June or July and make sure?
It's been done since Roger retired. We haven't done any formal.
Cause usually we do that too with all the committee members.
We talked about it.
Yeah.
We just wanna make you bona fide.
Whatever needs to be done.
Maybe we'll check and see when we do, cause we usually do. And annual, I don't know if Luanne remembers that either.
That's it?
When we do like the usual, like here's our committee members and here's our chair. We go through and check all that, and I don't remember.
Well, they have to reappoint from time to time, we haven't been real, don't think about that, every last time we did it was in twenty twenty, but.
We will, and the other thing, we kind of talked since we've got a newer board in the R L F committee, we haven't sat down. And talked about goals, objectives, it would probably be good to do that, and I don't know, it has to be a work session, but. But just to get everybody in the same room, so we're all.
I think a question on that would be appropriate.
Let me kind of check. Everybody's scheduled on the other side and then see if we can't line up yet this summer, so. All right.
Yeah, Mike, yeah, are you guys in a hurry or can you just?
Right.
There. Yeah, we're just here listening.
Our zoning administrator and Ruth Oliver. I don't, is, like, Jessica is assistant, zoning administrator assistant, isn't it?
It depends on the day.
Okay.
So anyway.
Good morning.
Good morning, and what I handed you guys there is just FYI, there's no action that needs to be taken on it. It's just a, uh. Letting you know what happened in my at the Board of Adjustment. So three cases went before us and the board deemed that their, uh. The special exceptions were allowable and weren't of any. There was no danger or anything, so that they allowed all three of the special exceptions, so I wanted just you guys to have that. The, um, just so you know, um, Alden. And Sunset Ridge subdivisions are both, uh, I don't know how you wanna handwrite, tabled or postponed. Silverdane will come before us next week. Uh, for Sunset Ridge and Alden. It's gonna be a lot longer, their, uh, their surveyor engineer was, was pushing to get. Things moving, but nothing's, they're not ready, so that's gonna be.
We still having some drainage talks out there, issues?
They're still waiting for the Corg engineer to give them permission to, uh, lay that.
Okay.
Lay that too.
Okay.
So that's gonna be longer, but Silverdane's will be ready next week.
Okay, so you see.
So table or postpone, I don't know what works for you guys.
How do we just postpone?
Well, my talk from John's is if you postpone, you have to postpone to a specific date, so table, like, would you?
All we gotta do to untable it is just.
That's fine.
I'm mostly table the Alden subdivision.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion second to table all the subdivision, uh, for discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay, motion carried.
Did you wanna postpone then Sunset Ridge until next week?
Sure.
Okay.
Well.
No motion.
I'll second that.
Motion second to table the Sunset Ridge subdivision, uh, until further notice, all those in favor say aye.
Or no, next week, you said?
Next week.
Everything works, we're gonna postpone it until.
Next week.
Next week, has to have a specific time.
I thought you tabled it, not postponed it.
No, post, table while then postpone.
But the motion was to table.
No, I said, I'm mostly what she said.
Okay.
Postpone it till next week.
If we know for sure.
Yes, we're good, he was, um, he has some infrastructure that's actually gonna be completed. If he held off and waited till next week, and that would have kept his bonding down for the. Improvements that weren't there, so this is gonna help him out and also make things a little easier for us.
A motion a second to postpone the Sunset Ridge subdivision final plat as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Uh.
I oppose nay, motion carried.
Okay, so the next one, next week, you talked about. Wind energy resolutions, I have that, um, on that B Board of Supervisor.
Okay.
Date, uh, by twenty-three, twenty-three, so, uh, he can pull it up too, if it's easier to read on the screen. Uh, is, you guys asked about a moratorium on wind energy. I didn't know which way you guys wanted to go, this one in front of you does not omit. Matt Towers. So that would still be allowable, although if you guys want that, we can add it, and this is something that's gonna be on, we can do next week. So I don't think we can take any action on that.
So when we talk about a moratorium, are we saying? At no circumstances that we're even gonna think about it, or do they bring a proposal and we still have the option to say, yeah, or nay? I worry about putting a moratorium on something to say, we're, we're not even gonna discuss it. I mean, there's a revenue flow here that I don't know about, because we're not involved in it. And I, I don't have enough of information to say, no, I don't even wanna talk to you about it, I, I guess I don't know what, what's all involved, I don't.
When I, when I mentioned the moratorium, what I want is, or what I was thinking is moratorium until we have our ordinance in place on how we will handle. What our setbacks would be, those kind of requirements.
That's basically what this says, I sent it out to you guys last Friday sometime, uh, but that's basically what this says. That's basically what this says, I sent it out to you guys last Friday sometime, uh but that's basically what this says uh in a uh nine months. And here's part of it, uh and the reason I put that nine months, and you guys can alter this anywhere you want, uh the suggestion for that was, we don't have a comprehensive plan, and typically.
Well, they're working on it, correct?
July first, July first, but so typically.
Starts July first?
Yes, sir.
Well, then, two years from now.
Well, at the, at the same time, well, we have some guidance in that, and know what, you know, what do we want, so anything that we develop wind wise should reflect what we're planning in our comprehensive plan, what are our greater goals for the county? You know, the next ten, twenty years down the road, so yeah, this just basically says, and you can read it over again, we don't have to approve it today, if there's anything you're not comfortable with in that. And then two, I do have another sample. Um, I got this just this morning, this is from my buddy up in Shelby County, they just passed a moratorium.
So do you have both of them so that I could bear, like, do you have that one printed up or you could print that one off?
Um.
Yeah, I know you emailed to, did you email to Luanne too?
Yeah, I think it's printed in your binder.
Yeah, I was thinking that you should have a hard copy of that.
Right here.
Yep, okay, I'm sorry.
I have it, so yeah, there's, there are two different resolutions, they're kind of different, the one thing I did include in ours is you know, just that we, I know you guys have been concerned about the highways and what you're seeing from the road. So I don't know if our wind ordinance, we wanna be a little stricter around our scenic highways. You know, we're not, that's something, but that's down the road, but I did put, you know, scenic byways in the sample resolution that I presented you last week. And on to the next, so, and you can find pictures on this one, this will be Marshall.
No, we, we have not decided what to do with this.
Oh, I just, I guess like, but we, I don't know.
He suggested we didn't have to take any act.
It's suggested.
Again, that was my thing, it's like with this met tower. They just came and put it up, that's what they did, and then they came back and said, oh, we're sorry, we didn't follow your permitting program. Uh process, oh, and it just, could you just approve it? And then we have to kind of backtrack and all that kind, I'd like that to stop, I would like us to be prepared, so when people come, there is a process and penalty for not following the process. And uh, you know, and I, you can argue buildings and this and all these different things. This is coming, this is something that we wanna make sure we do correctly, right now, we have nothing in place, and with nothing in place, we can be taken advantage of. Because we're not prepared, so I mean, this is what we wanna do, and they pretty much have it their own way.
My only, my only concern with the way you proposed it last week is that nothing else can go up. You're giving who's already got theirs up as an advantage, where I'm okay with maybe if they do the met tower per guidelines, not coming in after the fact, but I think we should, if you know, another company wants to put up a tower to just reg, to see if it's even valuable data, that should be allowed, but yeah.
And I will agree to that, that.
Not going.
So I'd like them to take that then.
Yes, right.
Because of the fact of the.
And we can talk about add penalties and making people tear stuff down, but we'd have to do it consistently, not just corporations.
And that's where you could get into, you're gonna make them tear down a whole house.
Yeah, and we do, we get additions, we get all kinds of stuff without permits.
I know. Right now, that's the purpose to be suggesting a moratorium, you said, you don't include the met towers?
It does not, yes, but I can add it, the first draft I sent you guys last Friday did. However, uh we were just kinda talking and it's like, well, we can take it out, we can keep it in, it doesn't matter, just you guys are.
Is it still a case by case basis, basically, if they follow the procedures by the permit, we could still a case by case? We can say yeah or nay, correct?
We're not, I don't see us permitting any wind turbines, any wind towers till we get an ordinance.
Or the met, right?
Why not the met? Okay, I'm just asking, um, cuz it's just a radio tower.
Right.
It's just a radio tower.
But we should know about it.
Yeah.
Yes, they still have to permit it.
Permit for that, but, oh, I thought you were talking turbine everything.
No, 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 no.
Okay, yeah, but no, yeah, they'd have to get a permit.
They still have to get a permit, but we would allow the met power to go up, to let them do their studies, cuz that could be a two year process of doing their studies, I don't know how long it takes for sure, but obviously more than a year, because that tower's been up almost that long.
Right.
So, and I think to be fair to everybody. Otherwise, you're gonna have people doing exactly what they did, put erupting the tower and then be like, oops. Yeah, and we don't want that either, we want people to follow the proper protocols.
Yeah, I did talk to some people that work with Next Era in their county, and no one has ever had any problems. We're, we're kinda between us and Clinton County on this project down here, it seems to be the exception.
Did they ask for the permit for the tower first?
Yeah, they didn't have any permitting problems, yeah.
So why did they do it different here?
It's hard telling, cuz it sounds like that person doesn't work here anymore.
Didn't they have a new person that they don't know, that, excuse me, doesn't work for them.
You know, whether we do it this week or next, you know. I was.
Well, we had discussions, I think we can just move on, actually, we had a discussion, we didn't take any action, right?
Right, so.
Put it back on the agenda.
All right, and then the next is, you received an email that uh Francis Marshall on Pleasant Drive in Leisure Lake was asking for just, was just confirming what, if his camper, and I didn't get any better pictures, and um John and I were actually out there last week, after, last Tuesday after the meeting, but this is the question, uh the campering question. Uh, he, he stores stuff in it. Uh, the windows are broke out, a lot of it is, it's in disrepair, grave disrepair, uh. But at the same time, he wants to know if that can stay as a storage shed.
We have, look at this, it's kind of, you call, we always mention the slippery slopes. If you call it a storage shed, well then somebody with a car, you can say, all I gotta do is take the wheels off and puts up minute, it becomes a storage unit. If it looks like a camper, it should be rated as a camper, it looks like a storage unit, it'll be treated like a storage unit, you know, uh, yeah.
And I have similar concerns, the one thing too, we, I, I am keeping an eye on is principal use. And I don't know how this all happened here, but there's no principal use structure on this property, there is no dwelling, so I don't know how these other buildings were permitted, if they were permitted, uh but that's beside the point.
Those are dwelling at one time.
I'm not sure.
I really don't know.
That could be where.
Yeah.
They could have.
Yeah. Or on contiguous parcels that had a dwelling and then sold the dwelling off, or I don't have a, an idea, but that's one thing I am watching on some of these that might you be using the, is a storage shed mentality or, or, or thoughts behind it, uh. Just is there another building, you know, a dwelling on that, because that's, you need to have that principal use structure before you can have the storage shed.
Uh, I don't view it as a storage facility either, I guess, I understand you could have a if you will call it a building that could look worse than that, and called storage, but uh I don't feel as uh, a van, abandoned, I know you could put stuff in it, but uh on abandoned camper, or if it will. I, I don't see that as a storage unit, and Liz asking is for more time to clean up or to consider that as leave it as storage, wha- whatever you want or both?
I believe it's both.
Okay, so do we, do we, are we making a decision on both?
Uh, if you choose, I.
How, I guess, how far has any of us been?
Well, you know, they have made some progress. They have made progress on this one, um, a lot of this over here has been taken care of, the, the debris piles, uh it's also uh you know, they're cutting up lumber or wood for firewood too, so they're stacking that now instead of just having stuff laying around, they're making, they've made great progress on this site.
Okay, so I, that is a positive move, how much time are they asking for?
Um, they didn't give us a date for a time.
What he's asking for is we call it a storage unit, he doesn't.
No, I, I know, but they're asking for more, more time to clean up.
This gentleman doesn't have email and is an elderly gentleman, and someone helped him out. I had talked to him previously, kinda know what he was asking for, even though the email did not include it, the email that went to you guys, but he he has some challenges and uh. Maybe.
Their timeframe is supposed to be June first.
Yeah, so in this particular case, no, and then plus he has a lot of properties that are having to be tended to. An extension of a couple months is probably not out of the line for this case.
Okay, I would suggest that if he is making progress, that we could maybe give a thirty day extension. And also relay to him that we do not consider that camper a storage facility.
Okay.
And we expect to see further progress, and if he comes back in thirty days and if we want another thirty, I think that's still up to us, correct?
I would believe so.
He could ask for another extension if significant progress is made, that, and again, that's just a suggestion that I, I.
I would, I would make, do we gotta make a motion on that?
I mean, unless you wanna discuss it, whatever your guys' thoughts are.
Again, okay, so here you have an incidence where somebody has multiple properties, is this thirty day extension for this property only, only?
That would be for you to determine.
Yes, we're talking about that.
Okay, so the other ones don't have an extension and they need to be done June first. No, no, that's my question.
Oh, okay, that's.
Now, that was in your letter.
Okay, so in multiple.
That wasn't there, although if you wanna make that choice, I mean, there's.
How did this get to June first?
Everybody, everyone out, everybody, everybody got the thirty day notice.
So then I'm assuming the other properties that he has also got the same notice.
Correct.
So all the other properties have a June first notice as well.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to add.
Okay.
So is this thirty day extension for this property only?
This is the only one he expressed concerns.
That's what his email was about, this one.
It's the only one he expressed concerns about.
So it has some progress on the other properties also.
I really have not looked.
Okay.
I guess I would make that motion of the camper is not a storage shed, it is a camper. Um, and that we do a thirty day extension on this property at the four oh five with the drive for thirty days, which would give him until July first.
Oh, second. A motion a second to approve a thirty day extension for the nuisance violation and to give notice that the so-called camper is not considered a storage facility. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay, motion carried.
And just, just to throw this out here, there are mobile homes out there that share a lot with an actual house, and there's one that if you didn't know they were using it for storage, you would have no idea it was being used as storage, is well taken care of, the grass is cut, there are no issues with that building. So, you know, some of it is uh, what is a nuisance versus not necessarily what they're using it for, so I would deem that the mobile home that's taken care of and on another property with a principal use structure, that, that is used as storage. However, it's not a nuisance.
So, the camper he's using as storage, he just paid the registration as a camper, he would be legit.
It's not movable.
Didn't ask if it was movable.
I know, but where, I mean, actually, if you do look at our ordinance, it does mention inoperable. And uh, let me just find that part of it. Junk is waste, discarded or salvage materials, including dismantled or inoperable vehicles, machinery, appliances, or parts of such vehicles, machinery and appliances.
So that other one is operable, you could hook on to that camper and.
It's, and it was a mobile home.
Yeah.
The other one I brought up was a mobile home.
But it can be moved.
Is a mobile home, but we don't usually ask mobile homeowners if it can be moved, because mobile homes consider real estate, right?
I mean, they're.
I mean, to me, there's a difference, I mean, that would be like saying you can't be a hoarder.
Yeah.
In your own home.
But he could put a cot in there and say it's mobile home, I'm living in it.
Yeah, right, same time, it's, it could be used as a secondary or accessory use structure that, you know, the mobile, it's in decent shape, just to let.
That's a dress that we have on our agenda and then we'll move forward with each case.
Okay, so the second one was Jeff Hartman, and you guys have the copies of that email? In your binder.
In the back of the, the Marshall one. In red.
All right, and you're finding that too, you're, thank you. So, Mr. Hartman had been says, I wanted to contact you about the papers I was served on Sunday, May fourteenth, which it took a while to get his served, but they were all out at the same time. First of all, I wanna let you know that I'm a hundred percent in agreement of what you're trying, or what you're doing, and I am all for it. I'm working on my property on the weekend, using the materials that are on the property to complete my project. Can you help me figure out how to address this issue? I'm more than happy to meet with you at the property to figure out a plan. I do not want this to be long and drawn out, but I do need a little more time completing this project, but June first is impossible, and for that and for that, I'm truly sorry, if you came, if you come to my property, you can see clearly that it is a work in progress. I do want your feedback on how we can work together to make all parties happy, feel free to call me directly with any questions, thank you, Jeff.
And again, is, have you noticed progress?
That one I have not followed up on, cuz this.
He's also only had a week, right, this is recent, so I have not followed up on it.
He's had more than a week, cuz he had the warning letter.
Yeah, yeah, and, and there's a few other things you can see in the pictures that would probably, you know, you'd wanna address that we're not building supplies, there's.
Well, I don't know what project he's talking about, I mean, a pile's a rock in front of the yard, doesn't constitute a project, I mean, it needs, you know, he's gonna say, I have a project, I would like it to, definition of what that is.
Yeah, I can give you the definition, but he did invite us out, you know, invite you guys out, so he, he has a very nice home on the lake that he has been working on for multiple years. And he owns a lot across the street from that house, that he's been storing brick block and building the, building materials on for the project, part of this project's gonna include a paver driveway, uh patio, something.
So basically, he's using this lot as the construction point for his house.
Yes.
You know.
Yes.
I, again, I would agree to the construction material, and gravel I would consider maybe that they're gonna use that and, and or.
I mean, to me, I don't.
There's a couple piles that are there, I don't see construction material, so.
Right.
Um, unless I see improvement, that you see improvement, and if you've not checked on it, my guess is we're gonna have to give them time for you to check on it if you have time and see if there's progress.
Sure, would you like this to come back next week?
I would.
Okay.
If you have time to check on it.
Would you like to meet with him at his request?
I was gonna even recall this.
Yeah. Okay. All right, you were?
A little bit.
So, but yeah, so if you, you know, if you wanna.
I would try to propose his request until the, our next board meeting.
Postpone.
Postpone, there you go.
Second, uh.
All right. That, I think covers me.
Cool.
Thank you.
Okay, so we didn't have a motion on the last round, we just discussed it, we said we would delay action, we didn't have a motion on the last one either. So what you were on.
We did, we did the thirty days.
Yeah, we did.
We had discussion, but we didn't make a motion.
Yes, I'm sorry, I need to, I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Yeah, I have a.
The one we didn't make is motion on this moratorium, okay. Yeah.
So the motion for Francis Marshall was a thirty day extension, correct?
Yes.
And the motion for Jeff Hartman is to postpone.
Motion and a second to postpone the action on Jeff Hartman as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay, motion carried. Thank you.
All right, and I'll look forward to hearing from you guys about how you wanna go through with that, March, right?
Okay. Okay.
And Mike, if you need to talk to me about it. I'm more than happy with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, um. We kinda jumped out of order a little bit, but uh, Mike and Bruce, are you guys available? Party, we are a little bit behind. If, if there's something else you'd like to do a little bit, if we can get ahold of you, but that's up to you.
I'll hold on you.
This is an email.
Thank you.
We just got an update, so it didn't take very long.
If I'm here uh. In another disappointing fashion to share with you some bad news, which I probably think you've already heard a little bit about. Um, and Lisa and I had that conversation. So we lost out on the second grant. These have been expensive. The program is closed out. Um, I wanna give you kind of a, an update then, where the finances for the project statement, and also where we stand on the RFP. Uh, again, to re, to remind, we're at a, a top line cost of about eighty thousand dollars in the system. Um, we, when we originally put together our financing plan, it was pre-Investment Recovery Act. And we were relying strictly on grants. We lost the twenty-five thousand dollar grant that we talked about last week or two weeks ago. That has been replaced with a twenty-four thousand dollar uh IRA. Uh, amount that is for uh renewable energy. So we lost one thousand dollar on that deal right there. But we had almost a clean swap out. I was pretty pleased. Now, the government grant we lost was uh equivalent to about ten thousand dollars. Um, we have no guaranteed way of replacing that money. But we do have another Investment Recovery Act program that we can apply to. It's one that will allow us to recoup eight thousand dollars or ten percent of the project cost. Um, there we would lose that another two thousand dollars, best case scenario. Um. However, that particular grant is applied for in the third quarter. Um, it. There's a limited amount of capacity that you're gonna bring online with that grant, one point six gigawatts, which is a lot, but it'll all end up used up. And, or will probably all be used up. And if it does, then there's a lottery to see who gets that, you know. Capacity, um, and uh, and the fund that's associated with it. So we don't have a guarantee on the eight grand. I, I, I wish I could give you a lot.
So if we apply for that?
Yes.
And then solar panels starts creating capacity. That doesn't necessarily mean we can use that power for our jail.
Oh, no, it, it does mean that. Yeah, that's totally, no, that's not really at all. When I say capacity, they're saying. Uh, are they gonna count our forty kilowatts toward the one point eight gigawatt, uh gigawatts or not?
Oh.
It's just kinda their internal accounting for what they're gonna give, give us the credit for. But the bottom line is, we're somewhere between. Three thousand dollars short on our budget. And. Eleven thousand dollars short on our budget.
But at the same time, remember that this, the estimate on what it would cost is two years ago.
Yeah, and that could, that could have changed too, this eighty thousand. It could be less, it could be more, it could be the same.
The twenty-four thousand Investment Recovery Act, that's guaranteed.
That's guaranteed.
That's locked in.
That is locked in.
So we should get a have, at this point in time, if we're getting a lot closer here, we should have a better idea of what it's gonna cost or nail down on a, a cost.
Exactly right.
So, I mean, if it's a guess, if we're ten percent higher, or I mean. All you read about or hear about on the commercials is, there's. Solar, sun, renewable energy, you know, that's all I hear about, but. What are they promoting then? Why can't we get it, you know?
Yeah, well. My, my point is for Lisa and I, I've reviewed and ended all the changes on the uh, the RFP. I've got the list of solar providers we're gonna go out to. I thought Lisa and you and I can meet next, sometime over this week or whenever, at your earliest convenience. I'm pretty much available anytime. Um, we'll finalize the RFP, we'll finalize the timeframe, we talked about that. Uh, we're looking for a build date that is in the third quarter, cause in order to qualify for that extra eight grand, it has to go online the third quarter. Um, so, you know, we're gonna probably shoot for.
Like calendar year?
Yes.
Okay, so it would have to go in between.
It probably November is what we're shooting for. Which is, I think consistently on the roof might be ready, if I understood some of that.
Third quarter is like August, September, October, or July, July.
August, September, it goes in.
September, October, no.
No, just. October, November, December would be the fourth quarter of that year. By August, September.
September, that's right. So we'd be looking at a September.
September middle day.
Yeah. So we'll work around that for our F P. We've got plenty of time.
And depending on whether, first question would be, it would our roof be ready for this in September?
Correct.
And second would be, the second question is, you subtract twenty-four thousand from the eighty estimate. That would leave us financing somewhere between forty-eight and fifty-six thousand dollars. If we're okay with financing or doing whatever with the fifty-six, we can proceed and kinda work that extra eight grand in if we can. And that would be a question, I think, for us, because if we're okay financing up to fifty-six thousand. Then we could issue the RFP and proceed.
I guess, Don, my answer to that is, I'm okay with that. But I have not seen any RFPs or what the percentage, if somebody tells me this up, went up fifty percent, I'm not okay.
Well, we won't get, we won't know those until we get the uh, the bids or.
I mean.
Correct.
You can reject it at that point.
Right, right.
The bids are all. Twenty thousand. And we're not budgeted and ready for that.
When we first talked about this, we did a proposal, I mean, we did the. Years of payback return, you know, I mean, it was seven, eight years. I, I, I'm kind of with you with that. That sounds like a good investment to me.
Absolutely. This whole thing, if it doesn't work as an investment, it doesn't work. We're here for that.
How long do?
I'm sorry?
Just remind now, how, how long do they say these solar panels would last?
Twenty-five to thirty years guaranteed.
Okay.
But they guarantee them for twenty-five. So the only way we'll really know the definitive numbers is actually put out the RFP, get back the actual proposals and look at the hard numbers. For which then we will know exactly minus the twenty-four thousand and possibly minus the eight, depending on the timeframes that will come. But if we wait another month before we decide to do it. Getting a bill in the third quarter becomes a lot less possible.
That's right.
So I would say. If we're okay financing this, cause the payback looks good. I would say, get it, get the, drop their request for proposal and bring it to us so we can approve it and get the, the official numbers in. So we know we're looking at, and once we know what the, the real numbers are, we can then say yes or no.
Perfect. That's exactly right.
That's what we want, yeah. I would make that, do we, is this an action? I would make that motion, so. Or just. Yeah. So that's, that's where I'm at, is I wanna see real numbers. If you guys know, we, we're getting closer to the real number, but we're still using. An estimate of two years. With a little bit of haste, maybe we can capitalize on that anyhow.
Right, absolutely.
So.
So we do have possible action, but would you like to see a motion to move forward with the RFP?
I will make that motion.
I will second that.
Motion second to move forward with the proposal for the solar project as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Thanks for your patience and working with us. I'm humbled and disappointed that I'm not able to give you more good news.
Keep working on it.
I'm trying.
Get to work.
And also thanks to Lisa and her staff. She got me the information I needed to get this decision back quick.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Nathan? We don't wanna hold you up.
I'm gonna go really quick, cause I have Fish and Wildlife in Bellevue on eleven.
You got water to get rid of here.
So.
Clean up to do.
If I can just kinda give you guys a quick update.
Yep.
Be fine. Seville, Seville Lake Campground opened up for camping yesterday. There's a few sites that aren't open just cause they're so soft ground, but there is campsites available. Um, Spurce Creek, they're working on it. I doubt it gets open. This week at all, just looking at how much silk and mud and stuff, but they're working on it today. Um, but while I'm on Spurce Creek's subject, I would like to talk to you guys, and then I'm gonna go to my board. Um, the contractor on the harbor wall called and was wondering if we could move the project this fall. For him to finish it. That way we can get all of our docks in. He doesn't want his name banished by people not getting to use their docks this summer is what he's. Hearing people complaining about him.
I don't know if he can, it's, it's off, it's really, I don't know if he can get in there for another month.
Well, I mean, river forecast doesn't even look.
Yeah.
Like it's gonna.
Are you able to put, by doing this?
Well, there's, there's some question marks there. Um, there's some tiebacks that were cut on the wall already that we have to figure out, uh, if we could repair them somehow to get the docks tied back in. I think we can do it. Um.
I mean, helping that, I mean.
Yeah, and that's what I'm gonna ask. You know, I mean, he's got a backfill what he's already done.
Right.
Get that stuff, so there's some things there, but if it's all right with you guys, I'll kinda move forward with. And I, there's a budget issue.
I would, I would be in favor of that as long as it's gonna work for you.
Yep.
And it's gonna be safe or.
Yeah, that's, that's our whole, I mean. If we gotta make. Safe, but.
Will this affect the, the permitting process?
Well. Yeah, probably. It's, it's good through the end of this year, so I.
I just.
I'm thinking I might.
Because so.
September, if it looks like the river.
So the permit we didn't need, we shouldn't have to worry about. We did need it before, we did.
I, I, all I know is, it seems like that was a big thing.
Yeah.
And I was there looking at it a few weeks ago, and there happened to be somebody from another construction company here. He said, I would, I would have held off, I wouldn't even start it till fall anyway.
Yeah.
Said it would've been a lot easier and all that kinda stuff, the boats and everything would be out. So I think it's a smart move to hold off, just so we can get, recoup summer as much as we can.
Yep.
Um.
Try to get as many, if we can get them all into the docks in, we can.
Right.
Hopefully. So we can have everything stabilized, so there's no.
Safe.
Like, yeah. So, I mean, we all know that the river's still high, and if you wanna take a chance to go out there and get the floaties, that's all fine by you, but. They're, we're not holding up dock progress with, you know.
No, and I think for sure we'll try to get the north half open for people this week. It's what our goal is, get that road cleaned up so they can get vehicles down there. Utilize those docks, it's the ones on the south. We gotta put all the brackets back together, get some of the tiebacks in.
Yeah, so I guess the only other part of that is, Nathan, is that you probably have to, is there a contract that we have to review and need?
Well, that's something I was gonna, I'd have to meet with company attorney to see if we can.
But you're gonna have to revise that so we're both on the same terms.
I mean, even if we are doing it this fall, we still want a timeline.
Yes, we would want, yeah, yeah, some kinda timeline with them. For him to finish it.
So you were also telling me you don't foresee any Memorial Day camping in Spurce Creek.
I don't know, there might be ten or fifteen sites that they get cleaned, but it, it's gonna be, you're camping on concrete pad, and right outside your pad looks like this table. My, I mean, there's no grass, so. Pretty muddy. I don't know for sure. Um, the crew is working down there, so. I guess. They got Seville.
If I, if I got any, any question that I get called or something else, I just check with you.
Yep, have them call, so. There is sites in Seville. There's a few that are still shut down down there, just hoping they firm up throughout this week before we. I didn't wanna cause this more work cleanup.
Well, I said, from what I've seen, the forecast, but the river stayed at about thirteen twenty for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, it's leveling out.
Yeah.
So. Um, if you guys are okay with it, I'll, Lisa and the county attorney, and then I'll get my board, which happened here today. Calls them and make sure they're okay with, trying to move in that stuff to the fall. Um, so, and then the other thing I wanted to hit on really quick, and I, I don't know, next Wednesday is our water trails. Destination, um, if you could let Jess know, send her, she emailed each of you, I think, well, she emailed Luanne, I'm pretty sure. If you would like to go or be there, we're just trying to tally out how many can.
In Canton, you mean?
Yep, Canton. Um, meet them there at ten AM for the ribbon cutting, paddling from ten thirty to four. Um, so, that's something.
You need to head count why?
Well, if you guys wanna kayak, if you wanna kayak. So, or canoe.
You did that on Thursday, I'd have been there.
Yeah, so I, it just, we're just trying to figure out how many we have and what.
I read that in there, so, okay.
Well, we have canoe. And our staff, I think our staff is hopping in with a couple people's kids, so they can go, so.
Pontoon?
Enter tube.
Enter tube? So.
With a platform?
It's just, I thought.
Come up there, but I don't, well.
Okay, yeah, I just thought I'd bring it up. Um, we'll be meeting next Monday. Um, for the destination, I will update you guys on that. Hopefully, there's no other real pressing questions for you guys.
No, it's, it's W.
Yeah. Drive slower, take fast, drive, take a chance.
Avoid the construction, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna go up to Andrew.
Okay, it is the Pauli Monday, yeah, next Monday's.
So you're saying.
The fifth, June, sorry. June fifth is the destination I'll be.
Okay.
That's all right.
That'll be on my mind.
Remember the construction, you might wanna go around to get to go there.
You can take the under highway, you're good. I mean, it's open.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a little longer, but. Yee-haw. So.
What a nice, good morning.
We're joined by Tom Devine, our Jackson County Area Tourism Director.
I know you get a lot of ribbon cuttings.
You got one, and I know you've gotten this. We are uh, having our official ribbon cutting this Saturday at our new welcome center. We turned lemon into lemonade when we closed our welcome center. We found a new one. So, Island City Harbor is uh, turned out to be a fantastic place. We not only have welcomed them as uh. Welcome, as uh, Jackson County Welcome Center, but we have gone, gone through the process. Of uh, applying and actually being accepted as a state welcome center. They are eliminating a lot of their bigger welcome centers and going through, going through this process of having associate welcome centers, and we're one of the first ones to be accepted. So uh, we've gone through that, but, and what that means for us is that we get the DOT signage, we don't have to worry about doing. And a lot of money for that signing, so I don't know where the welcome center is, and we're working with the DOT and the State Tourism Office to. Get those all in place and, and going, so. Some of the uh, quick number, and I'll throw some numbers at you really quickly. We had our uh. Uh, annual meeting uh, week ago Thursday, I guess it was, in uh, at Kalmus. And uh, announced some of these numbers, so I'll just kinda run through them quickly and let you know. Um, this is Tourism Month, we always have our meeting, annual meeting in Tourism Month, so um, we've got a few days left to our month. Uh, but it's just starting, uh, what's really going on in Jackson County. So. Uh, at our annual meeting, we gave out our mini grants. This is the ninth year that we've ordered mini grants. We've ordered about forty-three thousand dollars. And Ski Bellevue, Iowa Graves, Graves Mines Winery, Bellevue Arts Council. Uh, Jackson County Fair, uh, McCole Keveterment Corporation, and Island City Harbor all received grants. Those grant monies come directly from dues. They are all the return of all the dues that they pay us. So your support for us is strictly to run our program. Mini grants come right back to them, so that they can help, you know, help them help themselves. Um. We have just received the numbers for twenty twenty-one. We're all, always a year behind in the economic impact. The tourism in Jackson County alone accounted for a thirty-six point nine four million dollar spending in Jackson County. And that uh, created two hundred and forty-three jobs and three hundred and eighteen million dollars in local tax revenue. So tourism is doing. Great.
What's that last number, yeah?
The, the local taxes is three point one eight million dollars. We also uh, and, and stop me if you have any questions as I go along, cause.
Is that sales tax revenue where you're talking? You're talking about tax revenue, what, what kind?
They just label it as local taxes. Yeah. I'm guessing that's a combination of uh, sales tax and.
Local option, sales tax.
Um, we, this last year, we, we've been ramping up our co-op, and the state of Iowa. Uh, buys large groups of, large pumps of advertising, and then they dole it out to us so that we can buy it in a, in a, uh, cheaper rate than what we can go out and buy it. We, we spent about sixty-four hundred dollars in co-op uh, this, this last year. Uh, that was um. John Deere Road has a revolving billboard, we're on that. Western Illinois and Southwest Wisconsin have magazines that we were in there. One of our neatest one is AARP put out um, uh. Really neat, and, and I think it's like a QR code that people could scan on, and it gives, it actually sends me each week, it sends me people that have shown interest in Jackson County. So I can send them brochures and, and literature on Jackson County. Uh, we've been accepted, they, the state did a, a Soul of Iowa campaign last year. It was very successful. They wrote, launched Soul two point O, and uh, at application process of Jackson County has been accepted as one of the pistons, Soul two point O. We'll be having, I just got confirmation this morning, as a matter of fact, we'll be having some people come uh, for a weekend, the end of June. And they'll be going to different places in Jackson County and doing drone work and, and pictures and. Bit, and pictures and write, doing write-ups and all that is gonna be in, um. On, on social media, that's what they hit on really hard last year. Uh, Director Durham is gonna become visiting, uh, June fifteenth, uh, we're hoping to have her. Spend a couple days in Jackson County, because we've got a couple of other things we wanted to see, as well as the, the ribbon cutting at, uh, uh, at Innovate one twenty. Um, Localhood is a new program that, uh, I'm educating all of our members on, and it's, and it's. You know, everyone has an opportunity to put their. Venue or their business or whatever on the Iowa Tourism Website. Localhood takes a step further where they can do. They can add drone work, they can add videos, they can add, uh, photos, all of that, uh, and that, it's also promoted on the Iowa Tourism Website. And then we have seventy-eight active members this year, and what's coming up in June is, as I mentioned, the, uh, Soul two point O is at the end of June. But on, uh, June fourteen, we're going to have the Midwest Living Road Rally come through here. And, uh, the significance of that is, is it's going to. Uh, four different days in the state of Iowa, and it's gonna be in Western Iowa, and then it's gonna, the day that they're here, which is June fourteenth. They'll be in Iowa City in the morning and the McCoke Lakes in the afternoon. And we've been selected along with some big, big tourist attractions in the state of Iowa. What that does is Midwest Living does this road rally and. Next summer, they'll have their, in their publication, they'll have the results of their road rally and, and, and. Give the details of where they went and pictures and. We're excited that we were selected as, as, uh, part Midwest Living.
Do you know how many people participate with that?
In Midwest Living, it's just. That rally is just Midwest Living, um. Photographers, writers, and all of that, it's just that group from that magazine. That just collects all the information they can, so they can put it in their publication next summer. So it's not actually hold out a whole lot of people, but it's very, very influential people that will get people next year to. Yes, yes. Very exciting that we're having them come, so. Any questions, any? Concerns, where?
Oh, Josh, gonna make it to the annual meeting, but I had other commitments.
Yeah, I understand, we, we missed that.
Appreciate it, and, uh, pass on our appreciation to Kelly and all they're doing down there too with that, uh, welcome center.
Absolutely, and if, again, I know it's, I know it's a Saturday of Memorial Day, and that's a tough day to get you out, but, uh. Uh, if you, if you can, make sure welcome you, we're gonna have, uh, it's basically from nine to one. And we're going to be doing, uh. Uh, popping in, in complimentary. Day since that in the morning, then we're getting ribbon cutting at ten.
Did mention to the Together We Build. They're talking about possibly, you know, at our media, Grantwood City Byway Meeting, we talked about possibly. Like signs for ATV boat or whatever they're doing. And they're talking about doing some type of poker run. To maybe reach out.
Absolutely. Yeah, we had a, we had a car, um. Show or car rally a couple of years ago that, uh, in conjunction with, uh, the Oktoberfest, uh, pumpkin. Animals, it started in, in Bellevue and it went to animals, unfortunately, it was a terrible day and we. Didn't have anybody, but we, at that, at that time, we had some money left over from our bike rides that we used to do, and we bought these signs, so. We've offered those to any group that might be having a. A ATV ride, a snowmobile ride, any type of, uh. Event that if they need any signage, we'll be happy to let them use our Grantwood City Byway signs. Get us some publicity for Grantwood City Byway and have them give some help when directions.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, have a good day. All right. Jeremy. You're wasting, waiting patiently back there. Jerry Oden from Midwest Construction here to give us an update on our, uh, law center.
So we've got, uh, roof steel is gonna be wrapping up here soon, um, they're decking out there today, um. One thing exciting, uh, getting ready to pour a lot of concrete, um, either later this week or Monday. Uh, and the administration have taken a pretty aggressive approach, uh, kind of. Making lemonade out of lemons, and kind of like he said, you know, the roof decking not being on. It offers us the ability to pour the concrete with a pump truck and get a lot more down, a lot quicker, so. Rather than kind of sitting on our hands waiting and then bugging that in, I've made some changes to the scheduling, not the schedule necessarily, but. Moving some contractors around and, uh. So if I can get that concrete in, then we can start framing walls up in there, I can start getting duck work up in there. That opens up a lot of other trades, electricians finishing out, spray foam, things of that nature, so. Just trying to catch up some time here, you know, and, uh, grabbing whatever we can and. Been blessed by the good weather, so that's, you know. So.
Uh, look like you'll get that proper truck?
Yeah, yeah, uh, Jason with, uh, KD Flatworks is supposed to be out this afternoon, and, uh. I don't know yet if he's gonna pour two pours or, or one pour, it's a lot, kind of a lot, I don't know if he's comfortable doing it all in one. Um, he's gonna try and pour Thursday. I don't know how big a crew he's bringing, there's quite a bit of prep work to do, so I would say, you know, worst case scenario, probably prep. Thursday, Friday, pour Monday, maybe, something like that, so. Yeah, I'm excited about that. You know, yeah, holidays always throw a wrench and everything, so, but, uh. No, I mean, I, I don't have a lot more information for you than I did the last time, we're just, you know, working the plan and, uh. You know, get these rectors out of there, get this steel put up, you know, roof decking. And then get some curbs up, get some roofing going on, things like that, so.
Guys started proceeding with the RFP about the back slope and all that stuff?
Not too much, I, I tell you, we got. Considering that after I visited with you guys the last time, and I really need to get these rectors out of there and get them cranes and all them lifts. And all that machinery out of there and out of the way before we bring him in there and stuff and everything, but, um, Alex did stop out. Yesterday, yeah, yesterday was Monday, yeah, yesterday, and give me some control points. So, you know, we got something that we can kind of base that off of and, you know, try and work out a plan, so. And, uh, just on a common sense level, my general contractor and I have been kind of putting our heads together, even this morning, we were talking about it, walking around out there and. You know, I think some drainage tile is gonna need to be incorporated, you know, in that parking lot, maybe a French drain. And then, uh, we're gonna tie it to the back of that structure that's in the street right there, the storm sewer. And I would like to pick up some of those roof drains and tie that in. I'm big on getting rid of water, you know, and, uh. So we're gonna try and, you know, come up with something that works, so.
Appreciate it. You need anything or concerned, let us know, okay?
They were talking last night about like the millings and that for the Together We Build building. Or that from what they're grinding up, you know? Would any of that be beneficial over there?
I talked to Brian Waters from the DOT this morning, right before I came here, and he, uh. Directed me and gave me a number of a guy, Doug Hershey's the inspector for the DOT, and I'm actually, when I leave here, I'm gonna go down. And look at a pile of that they got out there, and I'm gonna see if that's something that could benefit and then talk with this Doug. And see how much of it is available, and, uh, kind of go from there, I mean. We don't have a proctor on it, okay? So, but if it was a lot that was available. You know, it might be worthy of getting Chosen Valley to run a proctor on it, so that they can do compaction testing and everything, and have it documented. And if we could replace some of the granular fill, that's gonna be necessary with some of that. You know, there could be some money saved there, you know, at the fairgrounds and the jail, I don't know, but I'm gonna go look at this material, see if it's even something we want. You know? But it came off the.
Where's the milling's at?
They got a file of it out at the DFP shed, but he said they were up by Andrew Millin this morning. And some of it's going up there, but as they get working this way, he said, you know, I could have. I guess, I don't know how much, that's why I needed to visit with him, but it's off the shoulder. I mean, you, you'd think. It's mostly gravel. And if it's got a little bit of dirt in it, it should compact with a vibratory roller, you know, so, but I just need to go look at it.
I appreciate you checking it out. See what you do.
Every, every little bit helps, you know?
Yeah, thanks for helping, Jeremy. Good day. Uh, Marty.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, some of the things we've been doing in my department is, uh. The carpet was laid in, uh. The two new offices for the IT and HR office, um, we did suspend the. Computer box, I'm gonna call it, I don't know exactly what it, what it is. Suspended up through the ceiling so we could get the carpet laid under it, and once it was laid, we, uh, let it back down, all went good. Um, I hung the wall cabinets in Bjorn and Becky's offices, they got new desks. Uh, the company doesn't hang the wall cabinet, so I did that. And, uh. In Becky's office, we took the air conditioner out, um, I patched all the holes and painted it and. Hopefully made it look like it wasn't there. Um, there was a big hole in the ceiling where the air unit itself was, and Becky bought a. I'm gonna call it a sound baffle. Uh, we hung that up over there to cover the hole, and, uh, it looked pretty good. Um, I thought. Uh, then we, I moved to the, the zoning office. There was fifty-two holes in the wall that I patched and covered up and am trying to hide. Uh, we moved Ruth's desk in, which was, uh, Luanne's old desk. Moved around for, she might want it moved once more, um, I heard her and Lori talking. We moved Lori's desk around, um, a couple times, because she didn't like where it was located at. But, like I told them, we'll move it three or four times, and then after that, we'll start charging. Um. Um, I moved not all, but some of the furniture out of the north lobby, and. I tried my darndest to get rid of it to somebody, because that one, one desk is pretty decent. And nobody wants that stuff, so I got it in the truck and I'm gonna take it to Junkies, I guess. Because it's the only place I know, you know, and then we usually bill it to, or. The.
Historical society?
Yes, thank you. Um, so that's what my plan is with that.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
You don't bill it to them, you give them the revenue.
Right, yeah, you give the check to them. Um, the, the, I don't know, you probably never heard it in the building while you're in here, but that. When you hoist the toilets in the women's restroom, it shakes the building. So we thought, I tried everything I could, I couldn't figure it out, so then I hired the plumber. And he come in, took them all apart, and actually, I think, made it worse. So then we called the company and. The flushometers have a working range of thirty PSI to seventy-five PSI. And right now, we're at eighty here in the building. And which the plumber says, I've never heard that in McCokeville, but that's what it, we tested it, and then when you flush it, it goes to one sixty. So he's gonna start out by putting, um. It's a thing, so when the toilet water shuts off, it don't bang, it's a tube about this tall floor air. He thinks that might cure it, but if it don't, then we're gonna check in to put the, a pressure regulator down in the boiler room, so the whole building. Is. Done that way, so if we ever put flushometers on any other toilets or stuff. It'll hopefully take care of that. Um.
Is there a cost difference between the two versus the air pocket thing?
Well, that, that is just a piece of pipe. Piece of pipe with air in it, probably, you know. Fifty, I'm gonna say fifty bucks, and I don't know what the regulator would be, because he, he hasn't. Come back with a number on that. Um. I can't think of what that's called, but it's, it's, uh, supposed to help. And we, we're trying to keep ahead of the grass down at the jail site, it's kind of hard to mow down there. Uh, Jeremy was nice enough to take the skid loader and level off a few spots, so we didn't tear the wall more apart. But most of it, we just weed eat, because it's just too, too rough, and I don't want to let it to grow up to be. Yeah, big tall weeds. Um. The jail, the door between the office and the detention center has a push button lock, and it was given us fits. I think we do got it fixed now, um. The second time she come and worked on it, was no charge at the county. Uh, but it just, sometimes it would work and sometimes it wouldn't. Uh, I made arrangements with FS to come and get the LP tank at the jail site. Uh, Jeremy says it probably will no longer be needed, uh, if they're not done by winter. They'll at least have the natural gas ran to the building and then switch the furnace over to that. Um, I made contact with electricians to put a dedicated service. Um. Service or circuit in the clerk's office for the, the box that they're moving over to there.
That box is not going into clerk's office.
Well, we found that out today. They found it out last night at four o'clock, and they called me and I said, there's no basement under there. He goes, really? I goes, no, so that changed them plans. Well, no, because it's all done. It's been done about a week now. But the thing is, they do have a dedicated circuit in that back office. Um. Hung the drop box and brochure rack for the HR office. Uh, took two, down two brochure racks in the hallway where HR used to be. And, again, plugged all the holes, passed the holes, and I will paint that. I removed the hall cabinet, fixed the wall, or I haven't fixed it totally, but I'm working on fixing the hall. Hole in the wall where the wiring went up through there. And I ordered a new sign for the IT guy, but, uh, he was waiting for the bracket. Uh, AP Graphics, and I told him to give me the measurement, because I have a few of them down in the office, that maybe we could use one of them. And other than that, and I'm, like I said, I'm painting right now, but. I moved everything in their office to one side, I'm gonna paint half of the office. And I'm gonna have to paint it pretty much two coats, because it's. Really dark colors. And I also took stripper, the tile that's on the window ledge, that was painted purple. And for some reason, which I don't know, they didn't want it purple, so I did strip that off and cleaned it back to the normal. Like it was, okay? Other than that, we're pouring a little concrete out in the parking lot, it's looking good. Um.
So is that gonna drain, kind of swell over here to the yard, the way it looks to me? And what about on the south side of the cornhouse? Is that just gonna swell down and go out to the street? Come this way also?
I, I'm not gonna say half, some will come this way and some will go that way.
Okay, but they're all in agreement that it's gonna leave the parking lot.
And if it doesn't, if it doesn't. Talk to Mike in the next room.
So everybody's going by the same.
Yeah, because he, he kind of walked me through it and, and what he told me, I didn't.
Sit on the sidewalk and eyeball it, you can see that it's coming, this part of it is coming to the. Other side of the, or the mound or swill, whatever you want.
Well, before we poured the, the concrete. There used to be a, a lip, you know, the top of the wall was here, the, the. Parking lot was here, well, then instead of digging it out, they just poured four inches of concrete on and made it level with the wall. And then when we got the big range, it just come right in, right down the window well, and the extension office took the hit. We pumped like nine hundred gallons of water one time, couple times.
Okay, so on another note, uh, here a couple weeks ago, or how long ago it was, we talked about the attorney's office updates as far as security reasons and. And or service window, dah dah dah. Uh, I know we were talking about maybe having, uh, Becky was gonna maybe help you write an RFP. There's some questions on that, do we need an RFP to our procurement policy, does it call for it? Is it something that you can investigate, or have you investigated about what it would cost for material for you? And estimated time that it would take if you consider, um, doing this in-house?
Yeah.
And so we can compare and say, if you've got time to do it in-house. Or with some help or whatever it may be, so we can make a decision in either.
Okay.
If, because I don't know if we've had decided, and maybe you guys can remember better than me, I'm a, uh. But the door, we, we didn't consider replacing the door itself, right? We talked about putting the film on the door. But it didn't shatter or something, is that correct?
I thought they have only requested.
I thought they have only requested for the door was the button to make it locked and unlocked.
Solenoid type thing, yeah, but uh I don't think we ever considered replacing that door, so whatever the window is, I know we have some estimates that you know, do we really have to go to an R F P? Or can we get an estimate, can you get an estimate, find out what it may cost to do it in-house if you think that's a viable?
Yes, in my understanding, in the past, if it's under such a amount, we don't have to bid it out or do all that, we just get a couple bids.
I mean, the thing is, if we are gonna do an R F P and bid it out, we want everybody bidding the same exact.
Exactly, I agree.
You know, I know that you talked to a couple contractors and got an estimate and they talked to a contractor or two and got an estimate, so we don't, we don't want no confusion here to say we're.
Well, when they, when all of them came, I was there and explained what
Okay.
and so was John and Jesse, so they all knew what we were wanting.
I'd like to have you meet together with John and Jesse and whoever's concerned about it
Yeah.
and talk to them and say, this is what we're gonna do. Okay, we're gonna put a security window in here with a transfer. And if we're gonna film the door and put a lock on the door, that's part of it, but it's all, this is what we're going to do with it.
You want one guy to do it all, is that, is that what you're saying, with the lock and the door? Or the window?
Certainly.
Oh, it doesn't have to be, but we, we need to know that this is what's going to be done.
Okay.
You know, if that inside wall needs to be opened up, and if you're going to do that, and if the outside wall needs to be cut out or chipped out, the block, and if we can do that, what's our, how do we compare it to?
I guess one of my questions and a, a good point that got brought up is you know, does, one, does that need to be a bulletproof glass if our door isn't bulletproof glass, because obviously if I wanna get to somebody in that office, I
Three steps to the right.
Yeah, and I can go through the door, which is a lot easier to walk through.
Well, I'll touch base with John and, and if he says, yes, I wanna bulletproof, then I will price it that way, okay?
Because some of this had come from chief deputy too, I think, recommendation, so yeah, I don't know if he wants to bring him into the conversation, but have that conversation and see if he can bring us your cost estimate.
I understand that, like at the law center that is, but they also have like a solid door
Metal.
that you have to walk through to get anywhere else, so that, you know, that makes that area secure.
Yes.
Just because you got a window that's bulletproof, doesn't mean you can't come through the window.
I've seen how that knows what can happen when the schools are locked up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, that's kind of where that stems from. And the other thing is, you know, does it have to be, you know, I talked to a company and they're like, does it have to be stainless? Could it be aluminum?
What, I don't know what's a stainless or aluminum, where's that coming in?
The frame, the frame that it's
And stainless.
For the window.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or if you were doing a whole new door, that would come into play there.
And, and just to be honest, I'm not, I'm not sure what's available, maybe stainless steel is the only thing that comes.
There's others.
Okay.
Because he's like stainless is way more possible.
As far as a window frame for either support or whether it's a channel, whatever it may be, it could even be metal and be painted, it's indoors, it's not out in the weather.
And just put a window in it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would think that the bottom part, you'd want something that was easy to clean.
Well, I think that's part of your, that's part of your access window, if you will, I think that's part of your
Yeah.
If you order a service window, that's part of your service window.
And I don't know which contractor it was, but the, they told me that the window will come and the, the window will support whatever is on top of it. Though it must be a heavy-duty frame because it's made, you make the hole, it fits in there and it supports whatever above it.
Okay, so I would just like you to put together uh maybe an estimated cost and if you're willing to uh do that or whatever options we may have on your part in-house.
All right.
Cool. Have a great day.
You too.
You bet.
Thanks, Marty.
Yeah.
Well, let's see, let's turn the page. Tom Devine's, Marty, Jeremy. Lisa.
Becky, so you wanna go back to Becky?
Back to Becky, where you been? Well, she was allocated at nine fifty, so you're late, so.
I was patiently awaiting to join you. Okay, uh, just a couple of things today, so the first thing I have is the assistant to the county engineer. So earlier in May, the board did approve the engineer hiring Tom Hughes as the assistant to the county engineer. We, as a formality, we do need to have a warrant proven rate of pay and authorize the auditor to implement payroll for the same. So for that, I would ask for a motion to approve the rate of pay for Tom Hughes at thirty-one twenty per hour, including authorizing the county auditor to issue biweekly paychecks for the same.
The mood.
Okay.
Motion second to approve the pay scale as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, I think he approved it, but I think that piece was missing, so just as a formality, we wanted to make sure that was documented in the minutes. Yeah. And then the maintenance custodian position. So we recently advertised an interview for the replacement for um a retiree that we have, so we'll have a vacancy in the position. We did make an offer and it was um accepted. This is a forty-hour week position with a current schedule of five thirty to two. We have tossed around multiple times um the ongoing need of what that schedule is going to be. It was recommended that we start the position at five thirty to two and see where it goes through the month of June while he trains with Mike and then transition to whatever that schedule needs to be. I've talked to the candidate about that, they're open to that. Whether that be flexed a couple of different days, have him here sometimes in the morning with Marty, sometimes in the afternoon. So it would be my recommendation to start the position out for the first couple of weeks at the five thirty to two. And then see how it goes and maybe reevaluate either before Mike retires or shortly thereafter.
So obviously, there's gonna be some overlap from training hours from today, so uh if I'm just thinking, hot, my, my outside the box maybe, I mean, I'm sure he's gonna get some training and give a position, he has relative a fair amount of background in this position.
Yeah.
So obviously, can, can we give him a problem travel and say, hey, tackle us and see how that works out and?
I think, I absolutely think so, I think, I think the main thing is showing him what our space is, where our buildings are, how do you get the supplies, where are you ordering, all those kind of things. And then I don't think that there's gonna be much on-the-job training as far as the custodial piece of it goes at all.
Because then I would like input either from the new hire and or Marty, department head to say, yeah, a different time sale or from, from courthouse personnel here to say what works best for your offices or the courthouse in general, you know.
And we talked about covering afternoons a couple days of the week, and he's okay with that too, so the fluctuation can be there. Um, we just figured get him in here and get out, you know, first week or whatever it is, and then kind of reassess that as far as that position goes. Um, so yeah, he's, he's willing to work whatever that schedule is, so. The position is budgeted at twenty-three fifty for July first. With that being said, I am recommending that um I have a motion to approve the hiring of Robert Kilburg effective May thirtieth at twenty-one dollars per hour with a six percent increase upon completion of his nine-day probation and then increase to the twenty-three fifty upon successful six-month review including authorizing the county auditor to issue biweekly paychecks for the same.
The mood.
Second.
Motion second to approve the new employee at the hourly rate presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post name? Motion carried.
That's all I have for you, I will coordinate um his first couple of days then, between with Marty and Mike and see what kind of direction they wanna go with him.
And I'm sorry, give me the start date again.
Uh, May thirtieth.
Thirtieth. Twenty-two today. So maybe make a point to bring him in and introduce him. And with that being said, maybe you wanna touch base with Todd next door, maybe we need introductions from a new employee over there, Luann?
A little, a little, it's gotta introduce you yesterday kind of by accident, but that would be good.
Understand, but maybe you can just give Todd a buzz right here and see if he's around right now.
Right now, okay.
Or not right now, but sometime before we finish here. I'm sorry, that kid interrupted you?
That's okay, that's all I have unless you have anything else.
No.
Uh, oh.
Okay, I'm good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Um. Wait.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three board proceedings, it's written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication official newspapers.
The mood.
Motion. Motion as to approve two minutes for the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, it presented all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed name? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-four cents.
I'll make that motion.
Also good.
Motion in a second.
That was the correct.
That was the correct, yeah, that's, that's the new number.
This is the new number?
Yeah. Did you, I'm sorry, Mary, did you need a new number?
No, no, this is after the
Yeah, right.
Motion second to approve the warrants in a book and publication of a claim listing in amount presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed name? Motion carried.
And Shelley is on her way over to discuss the procurement process segregation of duties for internal control policy.
I um, I received an email on that yesterday, correct? About the audit and the
Yeah, she, I wanted, I directed her to send it out to all department heads. Um, so everybody's been informed of this new policy, that should you choose to accept it today, to approve it, then all all offices, um, you know, will adhere to it, the only question I have with it is conservation, health department, zoning department, they all have outside boards and commissions. So the question is, is do those outside Shelley, you can come forward. Um, so do those outside boards need to pass this also? So we as a county are passing this today, but the question is, does the conservation board need to pass?
The question.
Spent a couple months.
My opinion is, is that once you pass it, then we would request that they, that they have. So. I turn it over to you to discuss it.
Um, the auditor's office has, or the state auditors have um questioned us several times on if we have a policy for internal control procedures and segregation of duties. So that's where this came about. I thought, and Becky thought that it was part of the um procurement policy that we had, but it's not um in the minutes, it's not specified out. All of the little components of that procurement policy that was approved are set out in the minutes, but this is not part of the, what is specified out.
So you were saying here to approve the procurement policy segregation due, segregation of duties, are we just adding that to our current procurement policy?
Basically, yes.
Okay, is that taking care of the other departments, you think, or do you think they have to do that also?
I would think that they would have to do it.
I would think there'd be some guidance from the state somehow, if, if this come up from the audit. Because obviously, there's other small counties like us that don't have separate segregation.
In the audit report itself, they have a comment section. And in the comment section, all, almost always, they have
It's the same.
They, yeah, that you have to have segregation of duties. And there are certain offices, especially like the recorder's office, um, that only have a certain number of people in the office, so it's kinda hard to segregate some of those duties. So it's more oversight and is required and other offices have to oversee or review um some of those reports that those offices are doing. So that's basically what this is referring to. And I did not, I sent an email out to all of the department heads and I did not hear anything back from anyone, so. Then, basically concur that we have to have something like this in place because of the state auditors.
Okay, so even if we add that to our procurement policy, who's the designated, is there designated somebody to oversee it then? As small departments or do we actually have somebody come and?
So does the recorder's office have somebody, is it per se? The auditor's office checks over the report?
Mary does some overseeing of the treasurer's office, but she doesn't oversee, as an example, I'll use Bjorn as an example, he has the I T department. Bjorn can order supplies, he's, he also um submits the claim for payment. So it just means that somebody else needs to make sure that if he bought a hundred thousand dollars worth of computer equipment, that somebody else, and it's probably gonna be somebody in our office, will know that we received a hundred thousand dollars worth of
Computer equipment.
Right, so it's just a, another layer and we have to be able to tell the state auditors that um all of a sudden, if the sheriff's office, we're gonna pay for two cars here the first of June. And if we can't prove that two cars are here, we don't pay for it. So somebody's gonna have to be a little bit aware, or someone in the sheriff's office because that is a definite no-no, we can't pay for something unless it is physically here. Um, so yes, there's a little bit of some responsibility back on the two department heads and such to make sure that who ordered it, did we receive it, now we need to pay for it.
Well, I mean, it all comes back to accountability, of course, but then, I mean, I gotta count for you and you gotta count for me, and then somebody gotta count for us.
Right.
You know, so it's like
Mary does do some of the balancing of the checkbooks for the treasurer's office, just because of segregation.
Okay.
This was, this was the common right up every year when we go in the city. Office of four ladies, I mean. They were like, you, you need segregation of duties, all right.
Um, we're a small office, so we do what we can and
Right, and that was acknowledged by the audit, it's just
So I, I think we all understand that, is it, it's just, is it a simple fact that you need a motion to approve the procurement segregation?
We do need a motion to approve the procurement process segregation of duties, internal control policy effective May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion second to approve the procurement target process segregation of duties uh as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you, thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome, thank you.
Leave it with me and I'll pass it with all the others, supporters. Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay, am I caught up? Are we down to Luann?
No.
He's late too, so you're out.
You're bad today, didn't you?
Yeah, we did it too bad, we got carried away with Todd a little bit, but yeah. Good morning.
Good morning. All right. Calendar for this week. Um, eleven-thirty today, we'll be having a work session on departmental budgets. Um, at six o'clock tonight is the final EMS coordinator's job description review, um either at the hospital or by Zoom. Wednesday, May twenty-fourth at eleven is the ramping up with R C P P webinar um for Don. I hope you know what that means, I looked it up once. Um, Thursday, May twenty-fifth at nine A M is um the R P A meeting, either in Dubuque or by Zoom for Don and Nyn. At ten o'clock is the ribbon cutting at open house at the expanded Carroll Center in Davenport, for any of you that can make it to that. Friday, May twenty-sixth at seven A M is for the leadership team um by Zoom for Don. And on Saturday, May twenty-seven at nine, starting at nine A M is the welcome center open house at Island City Harbor in Seviola, that Tom was talking about.
I will try to make that.
Monday, May twenty-ninth is Memorial Day and the courthouse will be closed that day. Um, our next meeting will be Tuesday, May thirtieth at nine A M. On the agenda today, I have one piece of business, I have a fireworks application from Tom Yearwood. Shooting him off the same place he's been shooting every year for several years. So I'm looking for an approval of a fireworks permit for him.
Um, I guess just the point is, we had a work session, a very uh worthy input work session on the fireworks and maybe where do we go forward uh at some point? And who do we include and what our, what our system application may look like. Tom was very informational, uh and had a lot of input. Uh, so I guess, you know, he's been doing this for years, but I, I you whether you wanna approve that, we did approve one last week, so we'll do approve it.
I'll second that.
Motion second to approve the fireworks permit for Tom Yearwood as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Right.
I oppose name? Motion carried.
Um, the only thing, only thing I wanted to talk about was our July fourth meeting. The courthouse will be closed on July fourth for obvious reasons. So I'm guessing we need to reschedule So I'm guessing we need to reschedule that meeting to a different day. And I am looking, hopefully, I've been talking to Shelley, it is a claims week. Um, Shelley would like to have the meeting before the fourth of July. So I'm, I'm looking at the third, and we may have Destination Iowa update that morning, so it might be. Might have to do it at like ten or eleven o'clock after Nathan's update.
Or they can do theirs at eight.
You tell me.
Well, just so, I mean, yeah, just so we didn't interrupt you here, I mean, it is a holiday weekend, of course, and families do vacations and whatnot, uh.
I'm okay with the third. And I'm okay with nine or ten.
And we can do it the afternoon too, if it makes it better, but I'm not sure that makes it any better, so.
When is the Destination Iowa?
Usually at nine o'clock on Monday morning. And I'm not sure that he's going to do it, he, I didn't ask him when he was here.
But he didn't say he was here, he's doing.
He's gonna do one on the fifth, yeah, the June fifth, it's gonna be on.
So yeah, he might not have one either, so.
So.
And that's another thing we can probably reschedule, especially if he's not doing it every month, so.
So.
Okay.
Our meeting.
Our meeting, okay.
That would be my motion.
I would second that or agree to that or whatever we're.
If we need to move by a motion, I have a motion a second to approve our meeting for July.
That's not long here, but.
Yeah.
Okay, change our meeting date anyway till July third to nine o'clock.
Cool.
And please make contact with Nathan and advise him that if he needs a. Uh, in Iowa, that he does it either at ten or. We see.
Eight.
Cause I know there's, there's probably a fair amount of celebrations that go on over the weekend, and most of the celebrations may be on the weekend.
Hopefully, our meeting will be light and we can get in and get out.
Not hopefully, our meeting will be light.
Are you gonna be here or be at Zoom, Mike?
I'm not sure.
I'll be as light as I possibly can, so, all right, that was it.
All right, thank you. Um, did I have something for that calendar? No, as far as the um, coordinator position, I will not be available for that, but I don't think it's necessary that. Um, there's been a lot of input already from agencies, so I think they're just gonna fine tune. I don't worry, so Becky agreed to do that. So anyway. We are down to uh, board commissions and reports, I did have an ECA council meeting uh. Last Thursday. And basically, we reviewed the new budget and approved the new budget, and it's ongoing in search for a new director, of course, Kelly is. Stepping down in a limited position after this year, so. Yeah, otherwise it was uh, all good, I had a waste authority yesterday. Uh, the office, the new building is just about completed, other than the septic, so don't use the facilities. Um, no, it looks nice, looks very good, he said, and it turned out really well. Uh, they had some issues with the flooring, didn't get, building didn't get put on before the. Cross come and everything worked out just good, so yeah. That'll make a nice uh, uh, meeting room and office for them out there, they never really had. An office out there, they were stuck in the attic the last three, four, or five years. Uh, so that's, that's working out good, and they, um, their new employees are working out really good for them too, so they're, they're just happy, so.
Well, we had Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting last week, and. Everything's pretty much going status quo right now, a few projects in the works. Uh, main conversation was is uh, hearing some of the challenges the chambers are having, trying to find a, a director for the Bellevue and McCoke Chamber. Um, they were, we were just talking about it as we do a lot. Jackson County Economic Alliance and the chambers work hand in hand quite a bit. So they've offered to lend support as much as they can to help them through these times and see what they can do together, or maybe redefine some of the roles. Um, to uh, to help them out, so.
Yeah, that's all interesting conversation, I was following a few emails there again, and where do you, who do you all include, I mean, you got a lot of support groups for. Uh, municipalities, small municipalities have their own town and councils and, and support groups that they promote, so yeah, that's interesting. Always a challenge to find, help that right now, so. Any other reports anybody has?
From the ECI board, they've kind of got all their mini grants and their supplies out. For their mini grant requests, which this helps centers and home. Daycares, they get things like CO2 detectors, smoke detectors. Um, approved step stools, baby gates, water tables, things like that, or. Um, there's some childcare centers. Um, they approved the provider contracts, which is pretty much status quo. Um, the sad news is that our director Peggy is leaving. The position and is taking a job with the state. Not a hundred percent sure what it was called, but it works with like foster care and. The Costa, which is like a child voice in the court system, so she's gonna be going to that as a full-time physician, so. We're sad to hear that news, cause she's been working well. And everybody on the board really likes the work and the effort she does on trying to keep all the different programs on track of getting their. Funding spent and allocated out as it should be. Um, Board of Health last week didn't have a, a whole lot on it, but um. Genesis V and A did announce. To the board that they will probably be giving up their office space. Starting the new year.
Is there some health issues there? Who are?
No, it, that's just more, she um. She's not hardly ever in it, and which has been reported to us before, and they thought that maybe that money could be used. To do something else, so if we're needing somewhere to. If we.
I guess, yeah.
Got our emergency person there, maybe that could be a spot that.
Well, and you know, at some point, and hopefully for accountability and whatnot, we'd be looking for a spot for our EMS director.
Right.
And so. The only other thing I had, and it come up because I read an article in the Telegraph, Saturday or Sunday, don't remember what it was. Uh, on our opioid settlement funds. Um, and they had a lengthy discussion or article about that, and. It basically led back to public health having a lot of input of what these funds are where and who and how. I did talk to our public health person and. Basically, um, she really didn't know anything about it, and uh, went back to almost to the cells position as far as. Where or what now, I would like to include somehow even law enforcement, I know they talked about. Um, maybe ordering just an extra large supply of this uh. Medication that combats overdoses and stuff like that, so. I mean, it is, and I don't remember what our number is, you remember Lisa, what our number that we're. On the opioid settlement, I don't.
And we're gonna be receiving, I received notice, we're gonna be receiving the next settlements, those five settlements that we. Um, agreed to receive, we'll be receiving those here shortly, it sounds like. And but there is no dollar amount given, because that's all dependent on who agrees to receive the funds or not.
Okay, so I know there's some. It was, it was a pretty good article, if you get back and find it, but uh, yeah, it's interesting to think that. Ultimately, we have the decision of what we use the funds for. So I would like again, input from public health, law enforcement, um. You know, I know Julie does some other things with some of this, but it really is not related to what she's doing or her position, so.
Right, um, we wanna make sure we follow those guidelines, because they're rather specific in which.
And, and if we can do training, if it's training, uh, you know, be law enforcement, or if it's uh, you know, school training.
Getting.
Students, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know what that is, I.
You got law enforcement, you got EMS services.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, so yeah. All good, all good talk again, so anyway.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I have a motion a second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed name? Motion carried.